Let me go ahead and, uh...
Oh.
How about that? Everybody hear me? Uh, I want to go ahead and call the meeting to order, thank you. This is the, uh, uh, Town Hall Meeting, Federal Town Hall Meeting. This will be the last one we'll be having this year, and then we'll start again next year. Right now, I have Parker from the Boys and Girls Club.
All right, uh, first things, I'll just let y'all know, uh, the bathrooms are up by the front door, if anybody was wondering. Um, my name's Paul Gerke, uh, I'm the Youth Development Coordinator here at the Boys and Girls Club, which means I'm out on the floor, uh, over the programs that are going on with the kids after school, and just kinda making sure that the floors ran safely throughout the day. Um, one of the things I, I want to start off by saying is I want to thank, thank the city for choosing our location to have their meeting, um, also thank them for supporting the Boys and Girls Club, cause all the great things we do here could not be done without the help and support of the city. Also, uh, some of the things we do here, um, we run an after-school program, try to provide a safe, uh, fun environment for the kids to come to. Um, of the kids that come here throughout the school year, seventy-five percent of the kids that come two days a week are on a scholarship, uh, which basically means that they are qualified for free or reduced lunch at the schools. Um, but we also, we don't, we don't let them just come here and run them up, we do run programs here. Uh, the, the programs we emphasize try to influence the mind, body, and soul of the kids. Uh, we run a program called Power Hour, four days a week, which is, uh, in, in use to help the kids with their homework, tutoring, we have staff in place and college students that help them with that. We run a program called Mighty Milers, two days a week, where they do fun activities and games, and then running to help build up their endurance, and it all ends with a 5K at the end of the school year. Um, then, uh, some of the kids that y'all met at the front that walked y'all back here, they're part of a group called the Keystone Club, which is a club for teenagers, where they elect officers, and we get them involved in the community, doing community service projects, um, we reward them with field trips when they do fundraisers and attend a certain amount of events. Um, and then that also spawns off other programs they have through the Keystone Club, which, like Money Matters, which is a program that teaches them the importance of saving money, um, the importance of how to manage your money. Uh, we have, uh, Career Launch, which teaches them the importance of, of going to college and picking the right career for them. Um, and that's just, that's just some of the programming that we do here. Uh, we also run sports programs here, we have football and basketball programs throughout the year. Currently, we have our basketball program for the fourth through seventh grade girls and boys, and we have four hundred participants in that, and that's just a little bit about us and what we do, and so, thanks a lot for using our facility, and thanks for your support.
Yes, thank you, Paul. I want to, I want to certainly thank the Boys and Girls Club for allowing us to have this room tonight. Uh, so, I know that, I see Rhonda Adams, Rhonda, there you are, War Four Alton, it's nice to have you here tonight. Uh, thank all of you in attendance tonight. I usually start the meeting off with giving a little, uh, report on what's happened the last three months in the city of Fayetteville. So, I want to start off with, I know a couple of months ago that myself and the mayors from Springdale, Rogers, Bentonville, Salem Springs, uh, Bella Vista, all went to, uh, and the Chamber, their Chambers of Commerce, all went to Washington DC and met with our legislators to talk about issues that affect the region. Uh, I know that we, we talked about EPA regulations, uh, costs associated with those. We, I met with the transportation, we talked about transportation projects that afternoon, I met with the federal transportation folks about some of the programs that we could have here in, in the region and in the city. Um, and we also, I took a position on the closing of the Regional Postal Center, that's about ninety jobs, I basically told them I did not want to see those jobs go away and that center be closed down. Also, in the, the last three months, we have, we are looking at, uh, a parking deck in the downtown area, which is about a five point five million dollar project. We're looking at a theater that, that we're looking at in the city of Fayetteville, which is about fifteen million dollars plus project. Uh, the Cosmopolitan started renovation on the Cosmopolitan Hotel today. Uh, they will do major, start major construction in, uh, December, which is about a, a fifteen million dollar project. Also, um, let's see, um, all that excluding the infrastructure of Garland, Cato Springs 265 will all be, uh, starting next year, but the Cosmopolitan, uh, and, uh, the deck, the theater, um, are all an investment of around forty million dollars that we could see in the city of Fayetteville next year, so that's quite an accomplishment. And, uh, the last three months, we have received some awards, the city, I would like to read those at this time. In the last, well, the last three to six months probably, uh, the National Council of Public-Private Partnership, uh, the, the award was the 2011 Public-Private Partnership Award, City of Fayetteville and CH2M Hill for their work in sustainability, national award. Um, the next one's Volunteer Community of the Year. This is the third year in a row we have received the Volunteer Community of the Year. Uh, this last year, we had over six hundred thousand hours of volunteer work with the citizens of Fayetteville. We received the Center for Digital Government, the award was, uh, National Digital Cities 2011, we were seventh in the nation. Um, Keep Arkansas Beautiful, which is the Super, uh, Shine Superstar Award for 2011, that is an award where we get, Keep Arkansas Beautiful, that's the Shine Award, we've received multiple years, and then they put all the cities together in the state of Arkansas and pick one out of all the cities, and we were the winner of the state award this year. Um, Cities of Distinction by Arkansas Business General, honorable mention, uh, Federal Forward Program. American, American Bloom, we received three awards this year, 2011 Award winner for population category fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we also see, received the Turf and Ground Cover Award for the, for the, the program the Parks Department started, where we replaced grasses with Arkansas Prairie Grasses that we had lost, that, that I remember as a child, but now we were starting to put those along the trail in different areas in the city. Uh, we also received a special award for the greatest number of years to receive American Bloom Awards, so those are awards that we've received in the last three to six months. So, as you can see, the city's moving along. So, right now, I will turn this over to, uh, the department heads, they will go down, they will be, I would like to start with Paul Becker on the finances for this year, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my name is Paul Becker, I'm the Financial, uh, Finance and Internal Service Director of the city. Uh, gonna talk a little bit about the budget tonight. Uh, the budget is on the council agenda tomorrow night. We will have an expanded discussion, however, Saturday morning from eight to eleven, and that will be viewable on the government channel. Uh, when we look at this year's budget, we go back in 2009, 2010, we saw declining revenues. 2011, fortunately, sales tax started coming back a bit, and I believe by the end of this year, we're gonna collect about a million dollars more than we had last year in sales taxes, and that will be in the general fund. In addition to that, we also received more in sales taxes that can go into our Debt Service Fund to pay off some of the bonds that we have for capital programs. As you look at the general fund, the general fund's about twenty-eight percent of the overall budget, it's the discretionary part of the budget, and that's why we concentrate on this. Last year, the general fund budget was thirty-five point eight million dollars, this year, the recommended budget is twenty-four point one million dollars, up about two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. The necessary increases were because of pension costs for police and fire, uh, you also had to put more money in fuel, cause as we all know, painfully now, that the cost of fuel has been rising and probably will continue to rise next year. Uh, also, costs have been up in the motor pool, as costs of replacement vehicles are in fact up, so we're up about, uh, seven tenths of a percent, uh, this year compared to last year in the general fund for those reasons. Now, when we look at the general fund again, we talked about 2009, 2010, we saw declining During that period, uh, the mayor had the budget formulated under a couple of basic precepts, one of which was not to reduce the service delivery to the citizens, two, to protect jobs. For those reasons, we froze wages in 2009, so, uh, we have not had wage increases over all across the board in 2010, 2011, and none are budgeted in the 2012 budget. The mayor is anticipating, looking at how the year ends, and at that point in time, at the end of the first quarter of next year, we will have everything in, all of our numbers in, for the 2011 budget, if at all possible, the mayor's gonna go forward and present a salary package to the council, but at this point in time, there are no salary increases in the budget. So, during the periods 2009, 2010, 2011, we reduced the budget by about two point five million dollars in the general fund. Did this by holding open positions, and again, no salary increases, those were the primary planks. So again, this year, the budget will be up, up slightly, and that's a good, uh, a good thing, is because of the sales tax increases that we have received this year. Now, the general fund still will be short about a half a million dollars, and the request to the council is to use general fund, uh, cash reserves to do that. Build the cash reserves back up, and we should have sufficient reserves to be able to do that. Again, I said the general fund budget's two point eight, uh, excuse me, twenty-eight percent of the overall budget, so the overall budget this year is a hundred and twenty-one point three million dollars. That's up about a two point eight percent increase over last year's, uh, budget, and the basic reasons those are up is as we in fact got sales tax back, we're able to increase some of the capital improvement program, uh, which is funded by sales tax, by, uh, city's sales tax, and also, we'll be able to pay off some of those bonds earlier, as we'll have some sales tax increases there. So, the budget's up about two point eight overall, most of that is going into either CIP programs, that's additional expenditures on the road overlay program, sidewalk program, trails program, that we had to cut back in past years due to the economic downturn. So, although things aren't, I won't say are totally rosy in the future, things are looking up a little better for Fayetteville, we anticipate next year's budget to, uh, to continue at this rate. Again, uh, next year's budget was formulated based on the same revenue collections we have had this year, so unless we have an economic turndown, uh, we should be, uh, in good financial shape next year, and, uh, that's the end of my report.
Okay. Mayor?
Yeah, thanks. I'm gonna go up to the mic. I have a few pictures to show.
Okay, hi, my name is Matt Mahalovich, I'm the Trails Coordinator for the city of Fayetteville, and, um, we have a master plan called the Fayetteville Alternative Transportation and Trails Master Plan, and so, I have a picture of it here, we've been working on it for several years, um, currently eighteen miles of trails are on the ground, built, uh, we still have a hundred miles planned, so, little ways to go still, um, but we're steadily working our way at it. We have a unique program in Fayetteville with the in-house, uh, Trail Construction Program, that's been around since 2005, and that's really been an efficient way to get trails built quickly and at a reduced cost, so, that's been a real successful, uh, part of our program. I wanted to talk a little tonight about, uh, what's been called the U of A Farm Trail, and it's gonna connect from Skull Creek Trail across the farm, University Farm, and, uh, go underneath 540 at Porter Road, and so, we heard from citizens that, especially on this side of 540, that, you know, we really want to be connected into the trail system, the, the backbone of the trail system is Skull Creek Trail, and so, we're, we're gonna be able to do that, and it's going really great, the project included a tunnel under Garland, which I've got some pictures, that that went in, um, about two weeks ago, and it was a real successful installation of the tunnel, so we'll be actually not needing to cross any roads, we'll be able to go under 540, under Garland, um, and then connect right into Skull Creek Trail, so, I've got a few pictures of some of that construction The trail is two point three miles long, so you can see here in blue, the red line on the right is Skull Creek Trail, it works its way up around the pavilion and the Agri Park, and then across the road called Nap, and over by the fairgrounds, and then back down and kinda under Porter Road there. Um, we call it U of A Farm Trail for construction purposes, but it's gonna be named, it's coming through the Parks Board right now for official name, uh, we have a policy of that, and, uh, one of the names that's being proposed right now is called Meadow Valley Trail, and that's named after an old schoolhouse that used to actually sit on, on the site of, where Agri Park is, near the pavilion, and so, that's kinda the most popular and historical reference is Meadow Valley Trail, so, that'll end up going to city council, and we're actually in public comment, so if anybody has any great names for the trail or any other ideas, we certainly welcome that. Here's a picture of completed trail, this is looking west around the fairgrounds, we've been building it kind of in sections as we move along, about three-quarters of a mile is finished like this. It's just tough fact that you can't really access it yet. This is along Nap Street, we're widening the street, and, uh, the trail will be adjacent to it with a curb separating the two. Uh, and this is a planned view of the tunnel and the ramps going to it, this was a pretty big undertaking to get this all together, that's the Pauline Whittaker Animal Science Arena there, so you'd probably be familiar with that. Uh, so, the trail will ramp down, and then come through the tunnel, and then back up the other side. Actually include a kind of a profile, that's what it looks like as it comes down at five percent, and through the tunnel, and then, even accommodates for the future widening of Garland, if it, you know, when it gets widened, it'll be just fine, the tunnel's long enough, actually, two hundred and seventy feet long, the tunnel. But here's our guys working, um, the in-house crew did the installation, trail crew, so, here you can see the road's cut open, and then the box culvert's going in, they're pre-cast, so they just set in there, you know, makes it fast, and we get the road back up. So, this inside is twelve feet wide, just like our trail width, and ten feet tall, so plenty of room in there, we'll be putting lining in it, we'll pick another picture at the end of the tunnel. But it's been an exciting project, we're really excited to be able to get connected in the spring of 2012, we should have it wrapped up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, let's go to David next.
I'll also be standing up, I'm Mr. David Jurgens, I'm the Utilities Director for the city, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about, uh, a project that we're building just a little bit west of here, where we're starting the design right now on the west side of Boils Avenue, recycling drop-off and education facility.
You can hit F5. Oh, you got it.
Okay, first of all, just to give you the general location of where this will be located, uh, and looking at the aerial photo, you can see the wastewater treatment plant here, this is Presimmon right here, Boils Avenue going north south, this is the general area where that's gonna be North Philaletons, in the southwest corner of that intersection. Getting a little closer, that's kind of a layout of the facility right there on the south side of the creek. A little bit more detail on the facility, now what this facility's gonna do, it's got a couple of missions, for one, it's a recycling drop-off facility, I'm sorry, it's a recycling drop-off facility, and what that will do is allow folks from this area, this part of town, to have a much more convenient drop-off for all of their plastics, and just as a note, we have added three through seven plastics just in the last couple of weeks, also for all of the other normal recycling materials. Uh, in terms of capacity, it'll be very similar to our facility on Happy Hollow, if you've used, used that in the past. Also, you can see this is much larger than what we had at Happy Hollow, and that is that we're building in an education component, it's gonna have a combination of recycled materials built in, it's gonna employ some low-impact development type, uh, construction, we're gonna do some filming of when we do that construction, so you can compare normal concrete with low-impact development type, uh, asphalt or concrete, so that we can learn the lessons. We've already got a rain garden donated by the Illinois River Watershed Partnership, so we're gonna incorporate some of those things that make this not just a recycling drop-off facility, but a full sustainable and education facility. And we've already started making contacts with both the Owl Creek School and the Farmington School, to try to get some sponsorship of the facility, so that we're gonna come in after we do the, the hard construction, we're hoping to have classes come in and start building some of the landscaping facilities there, so that we can make this a community project and not just a City of Fayetteville construction project. We will have, uh, it will be a manned facility, it'll be open, the, the plan right now is to have it open Tuesday through Saturday, we took a, several weeks of polling of people that came to our existing facility, saw when the peak hours were, and Tuesday through Saturday, met the demand for folks that use our current facility. We will have a classroom area there, so that students and classes can come and use the education components of the facility. Just a side rendering of the building, and it's gonna be a lot different from what we have down on Happy Hollow. This one accomplishes the mission, this other one will be just, it'll be a wonderful facility that people, I'm hoping, will embrace and become a community facility, and not just a City of Fayetteville, city employee type facility.
Okay. Connie?
Hi, I'm Connie Edmiston, I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, we are very thankful for this great facility the Boys and Girls Club has here, and all the great programs that they have, they're one of the many partners that we do have, and we're, we're really, um, happy with the, the way that they run things here, and the facilities and the programs that they offer the youth and, and the families here in our community. Uh, close by here, we have developed a new community park in our area called Davis Park, it is twenty-seven acres, it's located down, um, in fact, you can go straight on Rubeau Road and go into the links, you'll come in on the, um, west side of the park, or you can go down the Bryce Davis, uh, Walnut Road subdivision, which is North Salem Road, and go to Cornell, and turn left there, and that'll get, get you to the park. On the east side of the park, we just finished a twenty-four space parking lot there, we have a restroom facility, two playgrounds, one's for ages two to five, and one's for six to twelve, and a swing set component there, and a really nice gazebo there, a wetland observation area, if you haven't seen that, that's, that's a really nice area to look at, the Boy Scouts have planted various native plants there, and wetland species there, and it's, it's really a joy to go watch that. Um, over on the west side of the park is, of course, the Irons Dog Park, how many of y'all have used the Irons Dog Park, or have a dog, awesome, great. It's became very, very popular, and we hope later on possibly to add, um, maybe a dog bathing area there, that people can actually bring their dogs and, and bathe them there, and not have such a nest in their house, so, that is in the plans in the future. There's a pavilion there, there's also to the north, a nice pavilion that is by the pond, uh, in the future, we also have plans to build a little fishing pier there, so that people can go out and enjoy, and enjoy that pond, and also, we'll be adding walking trails, uh, throughout that pond. The other thing I was gonna talk to you about, and personally invite you to the Lights of the Ozark, and that is taking place this Saturday, so it's coming up at six o'clock, mark your calendar, the parade will start, and, uh, the mayor will be the grand marshal, he'll jump on the fire truck and come down and switch on the lights. Parks and Recreation staff has been busy since the first week of October, putting up the lights, and they have already installed over three hundred and fifty thousand lights there, and they're all LED lights, we're really excited over that, because that's eighty-eight percent more efficient than the other lights. So, um, an LED light bulb will last about fifty thousand hours, which equivalent to Lights of the Ozark hours is about a hundred and forty-eight years, so, hopefully our lights will, will last a long time. They will come on every evening at six o'clock, and will go off about one, one AM every morning, until next year. So, December thirty-one at twelve oh one, the lights will go off, so you can't enjoy them anymore. Uh, meanwhile, down there, we'll have, um, different venues for you, there'll be some vendors, um, and all throughout, I think, the evenings that are there, but the night of the parade, there will be, uh, food, um, many types of food for you to eat, so come down and, and feed your family, there'll be, uh, camel rides that you can engage in, and a picture, of course, of Santa Claus, and he has his reindeer up here, I, I think it's Rudolph's brother this year that's coming, but, um, they'll have a reindeer to take a picture with, and then they're, they'll have the horse-drawn carriages, which is a really nice, beautiful ride, treat yourself and a friend, or your family, and go around the square on that carriage. We're expecting the first night, which is a Saturday, about eight thousand people, so come and get your spot, and so you'll have it. Uh, throughout the whole affair, there'll be about three hundred thousand people that we would expect that would come, and every year, there's more and more people that come to visit the Lights of the Ozark, and of course, we think it's the best in the area. It takes over three hundred, um, not three hundred, three thousand man-hours to put those lights up for you all to enjoy, so, it, we worked on them for about six weeks putting them up, and then to take it down, it only takes a couple of weeks, so, our guys are really excited when, when that is finished. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Staff actually designs and creates all the color schemes and everything that you see out there, so, if you like it, let them know, but it's, it's really great when the mayor switches on that light, you're gonna hear many awls, and the kids' faces is just worth a thousand dollars for it, so, it's worth everything that we put it up, um, watching the faces of, of people enjoying those lights, so, come on down, Saturday, six o'clock.
Okay. Now, Chief David, I think you have a presentation. Thank you, Connie.
I'm gonna do two things here tonight, and the first one is to invite everyone here to sign up on the Emergency Alert System that the city of Fayetteville has. And, all right, how do I get to Access Fayetteville?
It's down the left corner, by the start button.
Got it?
Yeah, click right there.
If you go to Access Fayetteville, this is all you have to do to sign up to get emergency alerts from the city, things such as weather alerts, tornado alerts, disaster, natural disaster, man-made disaster alerts, that things are happening, and also information on what to do in case these things happen to you. And it's very easy, if you sign up, you will automatically get these updates from the city of Fayetteville on what's happening, what to do, shelters that are open. The best way to do it is to show you, so, you go to the red button on Access Fayetteville, it's titled Emergency Alerts and Information System. So you click on that, and you have a page that shows you citizen emergency procedures, and right below that title is a line that says subscribe to receive emergency alert email, and email updates. So when you click that, you get this screen here that shows you what type of subscription that you want to have, whether it's email or text messages, and you can do both, and then you type in your email address here. I'm real fast typist, so hang on. If I type that right, then I'll submit it. Well, I'm already subscribed, so I get this screen, you will get another screen that asks you more questions, and what it will ask you to do is to go down this list, once you click finish, or your next step will be to go down this list- Once you click finish, or your next step will be to go down this list and check the things that you want the city to send you messages about. And those things are, if you can't read them up there. In addition to emergency alerts, you have the community link where you can get art and culture information, community health information, economic development information, green initiatives, volunteer, places to volunteer. You can get bids and RFPs from purchasing. You can get the city newsletter. And you can get emergency alerts, community news, neighborhood information. You can get news about the mayor. You can get a calendar of events and other news and events. And I will show you what I'm talking about. It's a good thing I talk slow because I operate this computer kinda slow. Actually, this is pretty fast for me, just so you'll know. Now, there we go. We can look down this list. This is a list that I just went over. And these are things that you can, in this, in the previous page, you would check these boxes in order to subscribe to them. In this page, you would check them in order to delete them if you don't want those notifications. But let's look at emergency alerts. And we've had, looks like four emergency alerts. The latest one was a heat advisory. So we'll look at that. That happened on, back during the heat wave in July. And it has cooling stations. It has the location of the cooling stations. You would have, had you been signed up, you would have gotten this information on your cellphone or on your email. So you would have known where to go to visit a cooling station. And you would have gotten some tips on what to do in the severe heat. So with that, so that you can remember how easy it is, just go to Access Fayetteville. Now, we have Engine 7's here tonight. And there are three computers lined up right over here on this side of the room. Anyone that's not subscribed is welcome to do that before you leave tonight. Go over there, click the red button, put in your email address, click what you wanna subscribe to, and you will get automatic emergency alerts from the city. In addition, at this site, we have the citizen emergency procedures where you can choose your poison here. Earthquakes, explosions, fire, flood, hazmat release, heat advisory, power outage, thunderstorms, lightning, tornadoes, and winter storms. And so when you click on one of these, it tells you what to do in the event of an earthquake or a fire or a winter storm. And it has these procedures for the citizens to take. And then at the bottom, it has additional information over at the FEMA website. So with that, I invite you, before you leave, if you're not already subscribed to, go over to the computers that are set up and we will help you through the process if you need some help. We need everyone to sign up, every business to sign up. It's a good way to get information out on where shelters are, whether we need you to evacuate, evacuation routes, whether we want you to shelter in place and not go anywhere. It will tell you different first aid kits that you can put together, home survival kits that you can get through the FEMA website as a link to the city's website. So the next thing that I was asked to talk about is holiday safety. And we have, I have a nice presentation here for you on holiday safety. We have our public education expert, Sue Butler is here. She's got some smoke detectors. She has some information back there. And she has information on all kinds of safety, not just holiday safety. Let me see if I can... Alright. The next thing I want to do is to go to... What do I wanna do here, James? I'm gonna go to a website. This is James Zamora. He's a magician. He's gonna take us to a website that has a PowerPoint presentation that we prepared that is gonna be fun and exciting. So, thank you, James. Abracadabra. These are holiday fire safety tips. I've already done something wrong, so I'm gonna back up. There we go. I guess I didn't do anything wrong. These are holiday fire safety tips brought to you by City of Fayetteville and the Fayetteville Fire Department. Thanksgiving safety. The kitchen is the heart of the home, especially at Thanksgiving. Kids love to be involved in holiday preparations. I'm not gonna read all of these to you because the videos are more fun than me reading, although I'm gonna read them with meaning and feeling. These have tips on them like keep knives out of the reach of children. Everybody knows that, don't they? It says things like, when you're cooking, stay in your kitchen and keep an eye on the food. I mean, some of it's real common sense things. Never leave children alone in a room with lit candle. Keep children away from the stove. Stove will be hot, kids should stay three feet away. Did you know that Thanksgiving is the leading day of the year for home fires involving cooking equipment? We put out a lot of fires over the holidays. And a lot of them are from inattention to food that's cooking. Keep the kids active with things they can do to help, games, puzzles, or books. Now, these brochures, these flyers are back here on the table. So you can pick one up and take it home with you and study it and devote it to memory. And make sure you do these things during your holidays to make them safe and fun.
Hello, I'm John Drenenberg from Underwriters Laboratories. Kitchen fires are the leading cause of house fires in the United States. And on Thanksgiving, you're twice as likely to have a house fire than at any other time of the year. One of the leading causes of kitchen fires is people leaving the kitchen and forgetting that they have something cooking. Make sure that if you have to leave the room, say it Thanksgiving. You're gonna greet your guests and hang up their coats. Make sure you take a hot pad holder or an oven mitt with you so that it reminds you that you wanna get back into the kitchen and see what's going on at your stove or around your kitchen. The other thing you wanna do is make sure you take the clutter away from the cooking area. Too much clutter could cause a fire. So remove the paper towels, the cookbooks, and the towels from around your oven because that could be the start of a major fire. Also, loose fitting clothing is a problem if the clothing catches on fire. If you have loose sleeves and it gets into the flame, into the burners, you could have a fire that you don't wanna have on Thanksgiving or any time of the year for that matter. Also, when you're cooking, be sure to always turn the pan handles in. We've heard that for years and years. But it's important to keep those pan handles away from the edge of the stove because you might have other people around the kitchen and somebody could snag one of those pan handles and dump the contents on yourself or on a child. If you find you have a burning pan of food in your kitchen on your stove, the recommendation from Underwriters Laboratories and the National Fire Protection Association is to put a lid over that pan. The thing to remember not to do is to run outside with the pan because you could spread the fire throughout your entire house. And certainly don't use water to put out that kind of a fire because it will actually spread the fire even further. Many people recommend baking soda for putting out a pan fire, and that does work. But the basic recommendation is to use a lid to cover the pan, to smother that fire, and leave the lid in place. Don't pull that lid off until the pan has absolutely cooled down.
Alright, most of this is on a brochure back here at Leaflet over here. So you can get the same information over there on the table there or the counter beside Sue. Now we'll move on to winter holiday safety. Winter holidays are a time for family and friends to get together, but that also means a greater risk for fire. Following a few simple tips will ensure a happy and fire-safe holiday season. These are some holiday decorating tips. Be careful with the decorations. Keep lit candles away from decorations. Some lights are only for indoor, some lights are only for outdoor use. Use clips, not nails. Keep decorations away from windows and doors. The facts. One quarter of home decoration fires happen in December. More than half of the December home decoration fires are started by candles. Half of the holiday decoration fires happen because decorations are too close to a heat source. Then, if you're going to do some holiday entertaining, check your smoke alarms. Tell your guests about how to get out of the house if there's a fire. Keep children and pets away from the lit candles. Ask smokers to smoke outside. Stay in the kitchen when cooking on the stove top. Before heading out or going to bed, blow out the lit candles. Turn off all the light strings and decorations before leaving home or going to bed. Now here's a... Okay, don't do any of those things when you're putting up your Christmas lights this year. Now, Christmas tree safety. As you deck the halls this holiday season, be fire smart. A small fire that spreads to a Christmas tree can grow large very quickly, as we'll see here in a minute. Place in the tree before you put it in the stand. Cut it on the bottom, water it. Keep it three feet away from heat sources and make sure it's not blocking an exit. Facts. One-third of home Christmas tree fires are caused by electrical problems. Each year, fire departments respond to roughly 260 structure fires that begin with Christmas trees. A heat source too close to the tree causes one in every five fires. And when you light the tree, never use candles to light the tree. Use lights that have the UL, United Laboratories, label. This brochure, all these brochures are over here on the counter. After Christmas, get rid of the tree after Christmas or when it is dry. Dried-out trees are a fire danger and shouldn't be left in the home or the garage.
Hello? Oh, hi! Happy holidays to you too.
What's a holiday party or even Christmas morning scene itself without a beautifully decorated tree and presents? If your home is like more than 33 million other American homes, a natural tree is included in its festivities. How could this have been prevented? There are simple life-saving steps you can take to ensure a fire-safe and happy holiday. By following some precautionary tips, you can greatly reduce the chances of having a fire devastate your family, ruin traditions and memories during this time of joy. Keep the tree watered. Dry and neglected trees are a definite fire hazard. Do not put your tree close to a heat source. This includes fireplaces, wood stoves, and heat vents. The heat will dry out a tree, causing the tree to be more easily ignited by heat, flame, or sparks. Avoid using lit candles. If you do use them, make sure they are in stable holders and place them where they cannot be easily knocked down. Never leave the room with candles burning, even for a minute. Be especially cautious when you have packs. Further holiday tips, visit our webpage at www.mccolembosville.com.
However, happy, safe holidays from the City of Fayetteville. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, now we will take somebody else. Am I missing somebody? He doesn't have...
Me, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm Deputy Chief Mike Reynolds with your police department. I just wanted to bring a couple of laws to your awareness that recently were enacted on October 1st. After Matt and Dave spoke about the construction that's going in our city, I wanted to talk about cellphone laws. The first being an act that was specific for school zones, for a law that prohibits the use of handheld cellular phones by drivers in our school zones or passing school buildings during school hours whenever children are present. So that's the first one. The second one is a law that prohibits the use of handheld cellular phone devices while driving in highway work zones when workers are present. These laws were signed by Governor Bibi on February 28th of this year and enacted on October 1st. And they were enacted to prevent distractions related to cellphones in order to improve safety by reducing accidents. So we just wanted to take time to make everyone aware of those. We've had some accidents in our construction zones and our school zones recently. One of our city workers, unfortunately, we had a fatality. And just wanted to bring that to everyone's awareness. Just here to answer some questions tonight as well. Thank you for your time.
What questions do we have tonight? Would you come up, please introduce yourself? Any questions? Okay. Well, we don't have any questions, then. I will... Come on up.
Please, Todd O'Pannon. I've noticed in the last several years that we seem to have a failure in the city of connecting Water and Sewer Department with the Street Department. In one particular instance, and this is just one that I'm familiar with, the city came out and marked a repair area in the street. Okay, they left. Somebody else came out to dig it up, to do the repair. So they left a hole that compacted and wound up being about eight to 10 inches deep. So eventually, at some time later, another crew came out, dug that up and made a repair and piled the dirt over to the side. So then, somebody else came later to pick up that dirt. So there was about five or six trips out there to fix one little place. And another area, Hartman Street was dug up and down Palmer to replace the sewer line. When they got through, the Hartman Street is asphalt street. Palmer is a chip and a seal. But they made, in my estimation, not a permanent repair. They put coal mix in there, rolled it down a little bit. There's an old smooth surface that is, well, in the major, that matches the rest of the street. In Palmer, it's all coal mix. Right now, the base is showing through the coal mix patch, I call it. Somebody came out, looked at it. They put two or three little shovels of coal mix in there. Now the base is showing back through the asphalt. Looks to me like, we have an old saying, I worked for AT&amp;T. Said, "If you don't have time to do it right, when are you gonna have time to do it all?" Well, now that Hartman Palmer, that's about two years old and it's still not repaired. And I called, I called down and asked about it. They said, "Well, apparently, there's no plans to ever go back and finish that street." But why did we have to have all of these trips when one or two trips could solve the same problem and cut down on two or three more trips that are wasted man-hours? But it looks to me like that they actually need to make a finish that's compatible with the rest of the street when you leave a job like that.
Okay.
My question is, I guess, is why we're not doing it? My question is, I guess, is why we're not doing it? And your trail, crossing under one trail? I love the trail. I use the trail. But drive across where that tunnel was put under the street right now? It, it's, the surface is not compatible with the rest of the way. Kinda makes me wonder if the state approved that finish that's on there because it's, it's dipping right now. And why is it two weeks old? You know, that's a, that's a sucking place.
It's just the asphalt finish on it, it's not the low, it's not sucking down.
Right, but, but I mean, the street was closed. Why wasn't it brought up to grade at the time that it was put in? And there, you know, all the equipment is there. It looks to me like, going back to what I was saying, that the time to get it finished is while they're there working on it, not to have to come back at a later date to do it again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lawrence Hare. I live right over here on Rupel Road, and I'm a member of the Rupel Road, Rupel Road Property Owners Association.
Would you give me your name again?
Lawrence Hare. I have two questions on behalf of the Property Owners Association. The first deals with the recent designation of Rupel Road as a principal arterial. Now, our Property Owners Association wasn't constituted in time to really weigh in on that discussion. We're actually okay with that. We support that. We're wondering about the actual widening of the road, wondering if that is... I know that the plans to widen this to a four lane at some point.
Boulevard Road, yes.
And extend it down to MLK. Wondering if that's still a sort of vague plan or if there's something definite, some kind of projection down the line for dealing with that?
Well, I know in the first phase, the southern end, and staffing correctly if I'm wrong, the southern end of that is supposed to be done in our first phase, but we're not gonna get the first phase done probably until 2014, somewhere along in there. Is everybody...
I don't see Chris any other time.
Chris is not here, planning's not here. But I know that the second phase of that will come sometime after that, which would...
Mayor, may I give you the details? Don Martin, Mayor's Chief of Staff. Rupel Road, the first bond issue voted on by citizens, was broken into three phases. We've done the first two phases, and the third phase of that first bond issue will be done 20...
Hopefully, 2014, 2015.
Hopefully. 2014, 2015. And Rupel Road from Martin Luther King to Weddington, that section is in that bond issue voted on by the people. That's when that section would be done. And also, the northern Rupel Road portion from Mount Comfort North has not been done and would need a new bond issue at this point.
Does that answer your questions?
It does. I appreciate that. My second question is...
We're, we're ways from, from doing, doing the northern section, I can tell you that.
Right, right. I don't know how that is. But it looks like we're, I mean, we're on this side, Weddington, so I'm assuming we're, we're involved pretty soon. That's, that's good to know. The second question, just generally on the trails, I wonder if you could speak just a little bit to the extension of the trail system south of Weddington on this side of 540, specifically like the Al Creek Trail?
Sure, yeah. The master plan shows Al Creek Trail running from basically Shiloh by the interstate and working its way west toward Double Springs Road. That trail, it's kind of close in priority. We see it as an important connection. A piece of it was actually built along Persimmon behind the new Walmart. If you notice that trail right on the north side of Persimmon. So, you know, as development comes through, we watched this, and having it on our master plan, we're able to say, "Okay, well, we can go ahead and get that piece in there and then, and then connect the pieces together." We've worked with the school, Al Creek School, and then the next property, getting easements. But the big, kind of, we're kind of waiting for development in a way. South of Persimmon, along Al Creek, there's a large parcel of land that's owned by a developer that, you know, when things kind of turn around, they'll be ready to go on that, and then at that time, we get the, the land and the trail built at that time.
That answers my question.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming up to Ward 4.
You're, you're very welcome. I'm familiar with Ward 4, 4 folks.
You certainly are. Aubrey Shepherd. The Enduring Green Infrastructure Statement was added to the, is it in the 20-whatever-year plan we're working on?
2030.
Anyway, it's been in there for several years, the previous, maybe the last five years. But anyway, it was passed, approved to be in there. And so, this Enduring Green Network Wildlife Corridor, very important in many ways to the health and happiness of our citizens, residents. And it goes, works with the trail and the streamside protection and so forth. But, pardon me, the, at the moment, the boom is sort of beginning again in development. And I'm not sure that all the potential developers or even everybody working with, say, all the planning commission members or others that are talking about these things are fully aware of where those parcels that were marked at that time exist. There are certain places that are up for development soon. One is what I call, and it was discussed tonight at the Planning Commission where I just left, and it's, I've called it Hollywood Prairie for a long time. Gone there a few times, there's some rare native plants there and so forth, near a fire station and just south of the junior high school on, in the west campus on Martin Luther King. So, excuse me, I, all I said at the Planning Commission was, "Please be merciful, recognize that this is a very delicate site. It's a flat place with streams running on both sides and a stream through the middle." So, there's a lot of repairing zone to protect there. And I know the guys planning it, and they're good guys, but the point is that I think it would be nice if the city emphasized the existence of that part of our planning for the future as we go forward at this time, new growth.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Go on.
Hi, Rhonda, this is Ward 4. David, you mentioned 3-7 recycling and that addition to the city's plan. Could you tell, someone asked about that at Ward 4 meeting last week. It'd be good if you could talk to us about that.
Sure. Just, just within the last month, we were approached by the first real domestic manufacturer who's gonna be processing 3-7 plastics. Prior to that, 3-7 plastics had been, had been collected in some places in the US. They had all been shipped to, to locations overseas with documented cases of child labor, then sorting those plastics. For that reason, we hadn't ever really pursued 3-7 plastic recycling. We were just approached by a company called Preferred, I think it's Preferred Recycling, I don't remember the rest of the word, Preferred something, and I apologize for that, Preferred Waste Management thing, out of Pryor, Oklahoma, and they do have a sorting facility for 3-7 plastics. I went out and looked at their site about a week and a half ago, and they've got a, both a combination manual and mechanical sort line. So, we now have the mechanism to have recycled plastics start being processed here in the United States. What they do with them at this time is they sort them, and then they send them to locations that will then remanufacture those into a, into a new product. The sorting piece was the one that we were most concerned about, where there was the documentation of the child labor overseas. So, we have high confidence that that's not taking place anymore with these. Within the next year, when I talked to the shift leader the Saturday when I went and visited that site, even the, the folks working the sort line were aware of their plans to then bring in a facility or the capability to do oil from the plastics as one of their recycling mechanisms. So, they're gonna take the 3-7 plastics and that which they can't use in some other way, they'll be making fuel out of that plastic. And so then we'll have fully local, really in Pryor, capability to recycle those plastics. At this time, in Fayetteville, what we're doing is replacing out some bulk containers to receive 3-7s and also at our drop-off facility. We're not yet set up to do the residential curbside recycling because our trucks have very specific compartments that are dedicated to different commodities, and, and it's gonna take some work to modify our trucks to take those commodities. Coincidentally, the stars are aligning because there's a, the folks who used to do our glass are just stopping that process, but there's a new glass recycler in Kansas City who works with Owens Corning. They spin it into, into fiberglass insulation. They don't care as much about the colored glass being sorted. So, that's gonna give us the space on the truck to try to modify our residential recycling vehicles to where we can then take 3-7s, combine our glass into one container. Sounds easier than this can actually be on each truck, but where we can make it work with our curbside recycling. So, we're hoping within the next six to nine months, we'll be able to get our trucks converted, and then we can start doing curbside 3-7s. It's really, really cool.
David, do you have examples of products that are 3 and 7?
Yeah. Honestly, a lot of the plastics you use in your house, if you can't recycle it now, a lot of them will do. And I've been, as soon as I heard about this, I've started a pile. Your butter containers, your yogurt containers, your sour cream, a lot of your food containers like that will qualify. One thing I do have to caution, we do not want ever plastic bags to be coming into recycling because when I was out visiting that site, their front-end piece of equipment was just mangled and filled with plastic bags, and so they had their, their shift leader was in there pulling them out, taking hours to do that kind of work. So, but, but a lot of the plastics that you don't use or that you can't currently recycle do fit in the 3-7 category.
That's good. Okay. What else do we have? Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It was a good meeting, and I want to wish you the happiest of holidays in the next couple of months. So, thank you all for coming very much.